Item 10, Public Hearing and Action on Resolution 2009-073 to impose a moratorium on permitting or zoning action relating to new payday lending, car title loan, or check cashing businesses for a period not to exceed six months.
I've drafted a proposed moratorium on payday lending, on cash checking businesses, and title loan businesses. In looking at the Imagine Brownsville Master Plan that was adopted by this commission, one of the concepts that came out of it was a certain amount of social equity or social justice, and it addressed these types of companies which routinely loan money to the economically underprivileged. One of the things we did was, the legal department took a little survey of the payday loan businesses and noticed that they seemed to be clustering in areas of the city which are lower income. Commissioner Longoria, we've got at least three in the southmost area, we've got six downtown, we've got four on Central Boulevard, and five just in Strawberry Square alone. And all of these businesses tend to congregate or cluster in areas around low-income areas. The city has a master zoning ordinance, and that master zoning ordinance provides classifications for different types of businesses where those businesses can locate, but because perhaps these types of businesses didn't exist or weren't as common at the time the master zoning ordinance was enacted, these weren't specifically included by definition in the master zoning ordinance. And therefore, when someone wants to establish one of these businesses somewhere in the city, they typically place them, or they can place them just about anywhere. And that poses a bit of a problem in terms of creating zoning and creating a scheme for development. We've looked at the issue, and one of the things that we want to do is we want to consider and evaluate this. And what we'd like to do is we'd like to ask the commission to possibly consider a zoning ordinance at a later time. But the concern was that if we did that, in the time it took to post the zoning ordinance and go through the process, we might have this rush on the door of applications in terms of applications for new businesses of this type. So what we're doing is we're simply asking at this time for the city commission to enact a moratorium on new permits and new zoning applications for a period of not to exceed six months. That's to preserve the status quo. It'll have no effect on any existing businesses that are doing business right now. It'll simply prevent the proliferation of newer additional businesses, to give the city planning department the time to fairly study this issue and to propose a proper zoning ordinance to the city commission. Any questions?
Any questions? I don't see anything wrong with what you're proposing. I think it sets a standard that needs to be set, but that's just me. Any opinions from the commission?
Yes. In the material that you provided us, I did notice that this has a negative effect on property values, the fact that they cluster and they prey on the economically disadvantaged. And I also read some alarming statistics that only one in a hundred people who receive these loans are able to pay them back fully by the deadline. So I think you touched on the main part of it, which it conflicts with the Imagine Brownsville plan, because we want to be sure that we have an economy that's flourishing, and if this is something that's going to hurt our property values, then it's not going to be conducive to what we're trying to do for Brownsville.
That's correct, Commissioner. And, you know, as you know, the city commission has the authority over certain aspects in terms of the governance of the city. The state government has authority over certain financial institutions and financial regulation and things like that. However, one thing that is clearly within the city commission's power is the power to zone. And to the extent that that does, these types of businesses affect certain issues that are matters of the city's concerns, such as property values, which you've set forth, that certainly is something that's properly within the purview of this commission and which this commission has authority to act.
Senator Turner, I don't need to imagine. I think what you're proposing makes sense, okay? Now, may I suggest that you look at the pawn shop regulations and treat these similar to the pawn shops, to where they can't open up more than one within a certain distance. You're familiar with that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And the clustering, that's what I was trying to get to.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say.
Right now, we've got these businesses clustering in certain locations.
That way you break the cluster. When you draft the ordinance, maybe if you look at the pawn shop-
Correct.
-state law, how it's governed, and apply it to-
I anticipate that we would incorporate a density requirement into the proposed ordinance that we would present to the city commission. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll make the motion to follow the, Senator Turner's recommendation.
Mr. Mayor?
Can I have a second?
Do we have a public hearing or anything?
It's a public hearing.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just question, will the city be challenged, you know, you're being denied some money or rights to set up a business, whether it's bad or, not bad or good, but I'm saying this type of a loan thing?
I've got a, and I'd be happy to furnish it to the commission afterwards. I've got a Supreme Court case and a Fifth Circuit case directly on point, which states that the city commission has every power and authority to enact a moratorium on an issue like this.
Any further comments for or against?
Yes, I was contacted by Tracy Wicket of United Way about this moratorium, and they want to be able to provide some input, because they are also concerned about rapid refunds. They say they're also predatory as well, so I would like to instruct the city manager to contact Tracy Wicket and see what concerns they have about such programs.
Any further comments? Okay, I make the motion to close.
Some of-
Second.
Motion second by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Does anybody want to make the motion to take action on this thing?
Would approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All motion, all motion pass. Next item, please.
Item 11, Public Hearing and Action on First Reading of Ordinance Number 2009-0911-E to amend Chapter 46, Article 2, litter by adding new sections 46, 47 through 46 through 52 prohibiting the use of plastic bags in the city of Brownsville, creating an environmental advisory committee, and ordaining other provisions relating to the subject matter.
Honorable mayor commissioners, good evening. The purpose of this ordinance, the plastic bag ordinance, is to prohibit the use of plastic bags in the city of Brownsville, create an environmental advisory committee, and ordain other provisions relating to the subject matter.
Okay, you want to read it?
The implementation of a voluntary ban would be to promote the use of recycle or reusable bags January 1, 2010, through December 31, 2010, and then thereafter mandatory ban of plastic bag would commence on January 1, 2011.
You want to read the ordinance? Or is it, do I read it or?
You want me to read it?
Is it a very long one?
No.
About two and a half pages.
It's okay, it's okay. Okay, any discussion, any questions? I think you touched on the most important part, so.
I have a question.
Sure.
I understand you're preventing of plastic bags because of the nature of the crashes and causes, but what bags are you going to limit us to? Would you want to say we can't use them long bags, or you want to limit them to making black trash bags? Are they just the ones in the stores that they put as much as they can? Who's going to help put the cost of them? Who's going to be responsible for paying them? There's something to that pay, and how many jobs are we taking away when we say you can no longer use plastic bags? And my question, and I'm a proponent of community, but isn't it a matter of teaching of people instead of prohibiting by law the use of a plastic bag? Wouldn't it be better to teach the children and teach adults and use the wisdom of speaking and say, although you cannot have plastic bags carrying them? We're talking about jobs, we're talking about the fact that you've got to provide something for people to take their groceries in, you've got to have jobs to carry your stuff home to school. I mean, you know.
Does the speaker want to come up to the microphone?
Do I need a microphone?
If you want.
For the people at home.
My question to you gentlemen and ladies is, why do we have to make a law about using bags? And who's going to determine what plastic bags? I'm a teacher. At school, they bring lunches. You know what they use to put their food in? Plastic bags. Do you know why kids carry their gym clothes in? Plastic bags. So, I mean, when you say, okay, no more plastic bags, and we're going to give you a time period, who's got to fund the cost? Somebody's got to pay for it. What, am I, the taxpayer, going to have to pay some more? Because the poor people are going to say, well, I don't have money to buy the bags to carry my groceries in. I don't have the money to buy the bags to carry my clothes in from the store. And now we're talking about a depressed time of economics, and here we're looking to shoot somebody's job in the foot?
Okay.
Can't we use education as a forum instead of, okay, let's take out the plastic bags? And again, I'm an educator. I believe in educating. You don't have to pass a law about a plastic bag to get people to do the right thing. Isn't that true?
Thank you.
May I have the floor?
You want to say something? Do you want to say something to address that?
The question to the plastic bags, it's limited to retailers, commercial business, not to the personal use.
Refer to the whereas right there, so you can read it to her, please.
Whereas the use of plastic shopping bags has a significant impact on the environment, such as contributing to unsightly litter on the street, sidewalks, beaches, clogging sewers and drainage systems and polluting the recycle waterways. Whereas the costs associated with the use and disposal of plastic shopping bags creates a burden on the city's solid waste disposal process. And whereas plastic shopping bags have significant environmental impact-
I think they get the idea. It's plastic bags, shopping bags. And the counter to the argument is, what does it cost for us to keep the city clean and our landfill to absorb the cost of accepting the plastic bags, and they're not degradable and stuff like that? So that's the counter. And I think it's, Mr. Mayor, I think you can address the education part, because it's not just banning bags, it's also working with education. It's a multi-faceted-
There is an educational component to this.
Mr. Timmer, would you like to address that?
We have, I'm Rose Timmer with Healthy Communities, and we have done surveys, we've talked to the public here in Brownsville. Education, yes, is very important. It's very important, but it's not being done. So, if you think that a plastic bag is free and not costing you anything, you are very much mistaken. Those costs for those people that create the plastic bag, those jobs, the fuel, the resources, the energy resources to make those plastic bags, the resources to bring them to Brownsville, because they're not made in Brownsville, bring them to Brownsville, are costing you 20 to 25 cents a bag, and that's what our streets are littered with. No, it is true. I haven't done my survey.
Ms. Timmer, just address the chairman, okay? Don't get into debate, it's not a debate.
It's not about jobs, it's not about making people, it's about making people responsible for what they have. And obviously, people in this area, in Brownsville, get rid of their bags however they can. They're very light, they fly with the wind, we have that. We are given the, we have the bushes that are very thorny, they stick on there. Everywhere else in the country, in the world, Mexico City has banned plastic bags. They are affecting our drainage, they are affecting our waterways, and those things will eventually, it's not going to affect me. I'm going to go to my grave in 40 or 45 years, and it's not going to hurt me. It's not going to hurt anybody in here. But each one of you, each one of you, this Christmas, when your kids are opening their gifts, they might not have the earth that you currently have. And those kids might not have it either, if they go on and become adults. It's not, it's not a funny thing, it's a sad thing. I was in Aruba last week. Aruba, where you can have margaritas and sand in your toes, and we were in a wash in plastic bags. As a surf came in, we had plastic bags. We were in the Panama Canal, and we had plastic bags.
Go down the expressway, you see more.
We were in Costa Rica, and we took a canoe to look at the macaws and the beautiful trees.
Obviously, obviously, not everybody's going to be for-
No, and we're not trying to change the whole world.
We understand that, but education is a-
Education and healthy communities-
But let me ask you, Ms. Timmer.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Walmart, HEB, they signed on to support this.
We have contacted the Walmarts, the HEBs, and we haven't talked to the guy who's cleaning up the garbage here in Brownsville. We've talked to the people in San Antonio, in Dallas, we've talked to the Walmarts in Arkansas, and they are on board with what we're doing. It took us a long time to get to the point of where we are now, where we are voluntarily asking people, asking the merchants, asking the population of Brownsville to be responsible and not use plastic bags.
So the year before it's implemented, it'll be a process of education?
A process of education, and we are getting our group ready. We are very energetic, very ready to do it.
And Ms. Timmer, there are alternatives to plastic bags, it's not like-
Yes, there are.
It's not like, you know, there's no going to be no alternative.
That's right.
There's biodegradable-
There are biodegradable bags, there are reusable bags, there are other things you can use.
So this is a matter of conscious effort by community to set a higher standard, to reduce the waste that's going into the landfill-
Exactly.
And build a better community as a going green effort that we adopted through resolution.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
May I have the floor?
Commissioner Camarillo.
You know, a lot of people worked very hard on this ordinance, and as Art mentioned, and I praise Art and Rose for all the work they've given, and the mayor, you've had a lot of input, you know, this wasn't something that just was drafted overnight. As you know, we've been working over this a year, two years. The past few months, this group has met with a lot of folks to kind of gear, you know, how we would be able to write this ordinance. And I think it's very, very important to say, a lot of people were involved, and not everyone's going to agree with this, and I know they don't. But the most important part of it, as you mentioned, Rose, was, is the education. And I can tell you, in the meetings that we had with HEB and Walmart, the two largest retailers in this community, and especially in the world, talking about Walmart, they are willing to go to bat for the city to do whatever it takes to help us with this process. The year process is so important-
Right.
-because we're not going to just talk about the large retailers, but the committee will help look at local, small, downtown, and we talked about different ways of how to do this. You know, we weren't going to, you know, come up with all the answers overnight. Therefore, you have the year to troubleshoot all of those potential issues that we know are, obviously, you know, are present. And we've talked about what those would be, and people that would, it's obviously going to be an issue with them early on, but the plan that needs to be in place will have support and financial support to help get that done. But we also talked about working with our consulate and targeting downtown business owners, which I think is very important, because a lot of people say that that segment of, that business population would be greatly, greatly affected. Well, I think it's going to be the other way around by working with Victor Trevino, our consulate from Mexico, and Mr. Barkin, to help us work to educate that population. But we also talked about elderly and low income, and people are going to say, well, they don't have money to buy or pay that dollar for that extra bag. Well, one of the things we did talk about, and Art mentioned this, was looking at, working with the loan strike program to help the low income, because we do realize that, you know, we want to be able to equip them with the bags so that they could reuse them. The elderly, so important, home health agencies and medical facilities, they are so essential to the process, because they do a lot of outreach, more outreach than any one of us could do, through the promotoria program, how to, you know, ask certain questions to the physicians, but hey, how about giving them that reusable bag and having that, offset that cost from the city to that home health agency? So there's a lot of things that are going to be put into place within that year to help us ensure that we have a good viable ordinance that will work for everyone, because at the end of the day, and I've always said, it's not about any one of us here, or, you know, or the city of Brownsville, it's really about, this commission has the opportunity to leave its ecological imprint, not on Brownsville, but on the world. And when we hear the climate change, and we hear, you know, the polar ice will probably be melting in so many extra years, that's real, real significant in raising water levels and things of that nature. It's important that we understand that we have a duty, we have an obligation right now to help the entire world. And Brownsville can be on the map in terms of what it's going to do. This ordinance, I believe, can be a model ordinance for other cities in the state of Texas, and possibly throughout the country, but it starts with this commission and what we do today that I think will pave the way for the future and help this environment tremendously, because really, that's what all this is about. It is really about the environment and changing the mindset. And it is very difficult. I will tell you this, that I, I'm one that I'll forget my bags in my vehicle, and I'll say, darn it, you know, we have to use plastic, we have so many things. Three plastic bags, or even four plastic bags, you can fit all of those items into one reusable bag. And the more that you save them, again, you will reuse those. But it's, again, changing the mindset, the habits that we all have, it's a process. And I think it can happen, I think it's going to start with our kids-
Yeah.
And then it's going to transition to our adults. So I asked this commission to really, really consider this ordinance, because it will help. And one of the other things that it does is, for example, the poultry and the meat, it doesn't exclude those items. You need plastic for meat and poultry. And it's not saying that trash bags will go without plastic liners, because we're not saying, we're not telling the manufacturer, don't make plastic bags for our trash cans. No, we need them. It's the checkup bag, which is the nuisance that plays, not only this community, but every other community in the world.
May I have the floor?
Commissioner Samora.
Commissioner Camarillo, I want to wholeheartedly support this, and I did have one primary concern, which I addressed with you, and I'm quite satisfied with your response, and that had to do with the effect on small businesses and to-go orders, and, you know, how are they going to be able to adjust to such an ordinance? Are we contacting such companies like Cisco that sell plastic bags to our small businesses? What are we doing to help alleviate any potential problems that pertain to smaller businesses?
Let me answer that real quick, because the solution's there. We create the problems to begin with, the solution's there. If you go to C.C. Wings on Center Boulevard-
Yeah.
-their bags are biodegradable bags. And they're small bags. So I mean, it's not like there's no alternative, there are alternatives. The problem is that we don't, we don't have the expectation, we don't have the standard. And all we're trying to do is raise the standard to where we take pride in this community, one-
Right.
-to change the community in how, how we handle our trash, okay? It doesn't have to be with plastic bags, there are alternatives, there already are. It's not like they're not-
Exactly.
It's not like they're not going to be, if we were to implement this ordinance in 90 days, I assure you, every business will have a similar type of bag that is biodegradable. There are out there.
They are out there.
There are out there, except the standard's so low that we just, it's part of the culture, and we keep doing, and just because we keep doing the same thing doesn't make it right. And our landfill's getting full, plastic bag, and it takes 80 years, I think, for it to degrade. Our highway is littered, our streets are littered, and we look like a third world country when I think we deserve better. We adopted a resolution to go green. This is part of that effort. If we're serious about going green, we need to adopt this. I've been putting this for two and a half years almost, and I think this is the opportunity, okay? And like Commissioner says, we can set the standard-
That's right.
-but it's not impossible. The alternatives are there. The fear, it's more the fear of the unknown that's driving the opposition, because if Walmart and HEB accept it, they know the solution. They don't fear it, because they know it's there. It's those little people who don't realize that it is there. Once, we have a year to educate people, we have a year to implement it, and we have a year to flood the market with what's available, and nothing you're going to find it. In the end, they're going to say, hey, we should have done it sooner.
Right.
I have the floor.
Commissioner, I-
I got one question that was asked of me, and maybe Commissioner Camarillo can answer it for me, and I guess I'll totally support you in what you're doing, I think it's a good thing. But I was questioned by some of the smaller places, like maybe Lopez supermarkets or Global, or some other places that don't have the resources like Walmart or HEB to get, invest in these type of bags. Their question was enforcement. After what or when will they be fined if they're not going to these biodegradable-
One year.
After one year, then we start enforcing and, what's the penalty going to be, or what is it?
As it stands today, based on this ordinance, it would be a year, and January 1, 2011.
Okay, what would be the, what's enforcement? How would y'all enforce it?
It would be the same, the penalties that fall under the general litter law, zero to 500, and in some cases, zero to 2,000, depending on the-
So give me an example, who gets fined? Like, if I'm walking out of a Global, do you fine me, or do you fine the commercial establishment?
At this point, it would be the establishment, sir.
Okay, and if the establishment have these bags, these, I know HEB has those green, green alternative bags, recycle bags, if I'm a customer and I see these bags, but I didn't have time, and I go, am I going to get fined? Can the, can the establishment come back and say, look, they're right there, they didn't use them, how can you fine me? These are just questions people are asking.
And that's the exact same question, Commissioner, that we have tossed around many times of how we would do this. What we want, what we did not want to do was, we didn't want to tell the store, it's your problem, you deal with it, Lopez, you deal with it pronto. We don't want to do that. Therefore, the committee and the people that sit on that committee are going to help brainstorm with Lopez people, with HEB, Walmart, and kind of come up with some sort of a consensus on how to deal with those issues, because, again, we could be here all night trying to think of all the issues that are going to arise, but we knew that within enough time and bringing the right people to the table, your small businesses, retailers, and large businesses, that we'd be able to fix that problem and say, okay, you know what, maybe it's going to mean, you know what, they're not going to pay a dollar for the bag, maybe it's 10 cents, I don't know, but that's something that the committee's going to bring back to the commission to say, this is how we're going to do it, this is how we're going to help those businesses. Because we, again, at the end of the day, we don't want to hurt the business. We want to work with them and provide them with the solutions to make sure this thing works as best as possible.
I think our here, I mean, we're getting sidetracked here. I think here the focus is on the supplier, not the user, the supplier. You're talking about the HEB, the Walmart, the vendor, okay? If he is deliberately providing plastic bags after a year, well, then you will come in and cite him. But if I come from Matamoros across the bridge and I have some of the plastic bag, I don't think that's reasonable to expect, you know? You're going after who's creating the problem, and that's the supplier, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so I mean, you know, I think we're losing a lot of time here in worrying about those what-ifs and all that stuff, when we're focusing on creating the standard to where the supplier's going to have to be in compliance, and he's got plenty of time to do that in a year's time. And by then, they're going to see where they're, where they can get the biodegradable, just like C.C. Wings, it's got biodegradable little bags.
Just a comment.
I, I'm fully in support of it. I would imagine and would very much volunteer time to try and design different things during that year that will raise all awareness in all age groups, like perhaps designing a Brownsville environmentally friendly bag that we can find funding for, perhaps through grants, maybe have contests through different schools, just like they did with the trashcans that were very wonderful, to engage the children of the school districts to design the best view for a Brownsville bag. And I think that could be very, very good at raising awareness and promoting the project.
I think that is very plausible. The HEBs and the Walmarts, many of them have already set up green, going green initiatives, and they, in so many words, are committed to working with us to make an ordinance, this ordinance work.
This is a public hearing. Anybody else who wants to say something, please? Please address the chair, do not get into personnel.
My name is Craig Timmer, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. As you can probably imagine, you know my stand on this, I'm very much in favor of it. One concern I do have is, I personally think that 12 months for a voluntary program is too long. That's my personal opinion. When the city council passed an ordinance about not smoking, there was no voluntary time at all, it just happened, which I think is maybe too much the other way. I think there has to be time to help educate the people. But my biggest reason for coming up here right now is to ask y'all and to ask the audience, what did we do 20 years ago when there were no plastic bags? What did we do? We used alternative things. We used recyclable, I mean reusable bags.
What does Sam do now? Sam's doing-
And we use paper bags. And paper bags are, that- And paper bags are, that, that's certainly an alternative, however, it does tend to reduce the, uh, the, the amount of, of trees on, on the earth, on the planet. Um, I, I also wanted to tell you that in the last six months, I've probably purchased fourteen, um, reusable bags and I've probably paid as much as sixteen dollars for that. Now, in six months, I don't think sixteen dollars is an unreasonable amount of money to pay. I think almost anybody can afford to do that. But for those who can't, healthy communities, as you had mentioned, Mr. Mayor, is looking into the possibility of being able to give out these bags free so that people will have them to use and have them to use repeatedly. So, again, I want to encourage each and all of you. Um, one other thing, we talked about education. We've been trying to educate people with healthy communities for at least the last seven or eight years. And if you drive down Alton Glower to the west, if you drive down the expressway, if you go by the, uh, the drainage canal that's, that's next to the, uh, next to the Walmart over on, uh, on, uh, Old Port Isabel, you'll see that education has not worked. And I would also encourage the naysayers who, who really wanna hold on to plastic bags, where are you every year, twice a year, three times a year, when we hold a community-wide plastic bag pickup? Where are you? Uh, I know y'all are there, I've seen you there, but there are some naysayers who haven't been there. So, thank you very much for your time.
Before you leave, I think, I think you hit, hit it on the nail. Um, once, a year is too long, but I think that was the compromise to get, you know, to, to get us there. But once you create, once you start to change the culture, okay? Once you start to change the culture, I think the biodegradable alternative will be a way of doing business. It won't be a problem for you to buy yourself. It'll be, it, it'll be something that the industry will look at as part of doing business and they'll be handing them out and they'll be a common thing, just like the plastic bag.
Absolutely.
It's just changing the culture that's hard to get there. Because I remember the no-smoking, uh, uh, ban ordinance, which I introduced, by the way.
Yeah.
You know, I got a lot of complaints at first, but then it went away. People accepted it. And some people came up and said, they were very thankful for it.
Yeah.
You know? In the long run, it worked and it got done. But the resistance at the beginning was there.
Right. One last, real quick comment, uh, about high, higher taxes. Uh, if people think that putting in, as you had alluded to, people think that putting in an extra acre of, of landfill is inexpensive, it's somewhere upwards of one and a half million dollars now just to prepare the land, much less filling it in. So, who's gonna pay for that? Our taxes are going to.
Thank you, yeah.
Again, thank you.
Okay, uh, uh, Tere, please address the chair, don't get into personnel.
Hi, I'm Tere Flores. I just wanna know, who are we gonna sue when those, uh, um, uh, bags that, uh, the re, reusable bags, they're gonna get contaminated? Who are the people gonna sue? The city of Brownsville? Who else? The, um, Walmarts? Those bags are gonna get contaminated. Forty, uh, almost sixty-four percent after their second, uh, time that they're used, they're, they're gonna be contaminated. Uh, this is ridiculous. Why haven't you contacted the business community about, uh, removing these bags?
We have.
No, you haven't, where are they?
Madam, madam.
Where are they?
Tere, we had public hearings, we have workshops, uh, you weren't there...
But we're busy working.
It's not fair to come here and say we did not make an effort. Ms. Rose Timmer, and I, and I'll give her a lot of credit for it, she, uh, went out and had workshops and people came to her. You didn't go, that was your choice. They contacted the big industry like Walmart, HEBs, they talked, they talked to the communities. The public hearing is here for you to come and voice your objection. You don't have to agree with any one individual or the commission, but respectfully understand that as your opinion is respected, you must respect also the wishes of the, of the commission. You don't have to agree with it, but you must respect that. Now, I think a lot was done and this has been worked on for two and a half years almost. It wasn't done overnight. So, it's not catching anybody off guard. This is something that the city, uh, uh, is following up with, uh, with the, uh, resolution that we passed of going green.
Okay, but if we switch, if we switch to those, uh, reusable shopping bags, a lot of those bags are gonna get contaminated.
Okay, you make your point.
And they're gonna, they're also gonna, uh, cause cross-contamination. If someone takes a contaminated bag to a grocery store and it's all contaminated and the handler, uh, spreads whatever's in the, those, the bacterial whatever's in those bags, it's not only contaminating the new groceries or the new items that are gonna be put in the bag, it's gonna be contaminating, uh, the other shoppers', uh, items. That's a possibility.
I think you're going to extremes because I...
No, it's not an extreme.
Yes, Tere, we grew up without plastic bags, okay? We grew up with plastic bags.
Yeah, we grew up without plastic bags.
I go to Mexico all the time, they don't, they don't use plastic bags for shopping, they even use Morales.
Well, we're in America, we're not in Mexico.
It makes no difference, there's other people...
We're in America, we're not in Mexico, I don't care what Mexico does.
There's other people that are more advanced than you then. There's more people advanced than you if you refuse to accept and you wanna impose something just because you don't like it. Now, there's people that, that use Morales, okay? Sam's use boxes and, and I'm telling you, there are biodegradable small bags.
Okay, so when somebody gets, um, sick, who are they gonna sue?
You're an attorney, then tell me, bud.
Mayor, I think there's a confusion with, with the contamination in terms of meat and poultry and the blood and all that. And, and as Art has indicated in this ordinance, that is allowable, so go ahead, Art.
There, there is, when we were codifying the, the ordinance, there was one sentence that, uh, when, when the motions get made that I wish to be re-added back, and that was an exemption, exempting poultry, fish, and meat products to avoid contamination.
And there's, the biodegradable bags, they're disposable bags to begin with.
Also, these, uh, shopping bags, they're not even, they're not even gonna be made here in America, they're gonna come from China. At least the, uh, plastic bags, the majority are made here in America. We're gonna lose jobs. As it is, Washington is doing an excellent job of losing jobs for America and you, you all want to contribute to that?
What about our environment? Tere, you don't think we have responsibility to our children, to our, what's our legacy gonna be?
Well, tell that to, tell that to the idiot over there, he's destroying the country. Our children are not gonna have...
That has nothing, that has nothing to do with the plastic bag ordinance.
Well, you brought it up.
I'm sorry, but it doesn't.
But any, I, I think it's a bad idea, uh, I think those, uh, shopping bags is a bad idea, they're gonna be contaminated, people here don't know about washing them, they're not gonna wash them, and we're gonna see lots of lawsuits coming out of this. I think maybe you all wanna, uh, pat, uh, or help your fellow lawyers, uh, to drum up some business. I guess that's the reason why you wanna pass this. And that thing about that it has killed or hurt ten million, a hundred million animals, that's not true. The reason why they were hurt was because of netting, not because of plastic bags. You've got incorrect information.
Mayor, the numbers don't lie?
We respectfully, uh, uh, accept your, your, your notes and comments and, uh, take them to account and advise. Uh, anybody else? Pastor Burke?
I just feel like this is the appropriate time to talk about personal responsibility and littering. Uh, I've ne, I've lived a lot of places in this country, I've never been anywhere where people, where it's so common for people to throw stuff out the window, for, for people to be standing there talking to you, they finish their candy bar and right on the ground. When, when I was a kid, if anyone threw something out the window of the car, the car was pulled over immediately and that kid had to go back there and find whatever he threw out. And if he couldn't find it, he had to fill up a bag with trash. And if you do that one time with zero degrees, you're not gonna throw something out the window again. Uh, of course, it doesn't get zero degrees here, but it's about time somebody speak up and say, let's quit littering our city. Whatever you come up with, whether it's a biodegradable bag or whatever, uh, it's still gonna trash up our city when you throw it down on the ground. It, it's, I, you know, one more thing, while we're talking about personal responsibility and not throwing things on the ground, uh, everywhere else in the country, when people go to the grocery store and they go with their shopping cart to their car, after they get finished, they put it in those little places where the shopping carts go. This is the only place I've been where they all over the shopping, uh, all, all over the parking lot.
No, they're out, they're out in the neighborhoods too.
Yes, they're out in the neighborhoods too.
The green ditches, yeah, I agree. It's part of the culture.
Parents, teach your kids not to litter our city. And, and parents, you do that by example. You quit throwing things down on our city. Uh, let's keep our city nice, no matter what kinda bag we use.
You're right.
And by the way, I, I don't, I, I reuse the plastic bags, uh, I use them as trashcan liners, I use them, uh, for the gym clothes, uh, I use them for other purposes. They don't get thrown away until they're used, used. And, and when they get contaminated, then I throw them away. But anyway, that's...
Thank you.
...my stand on.
Okay, anybody else? This is a public hearing.
Move to close.
Anybody for or against? Uh, can I have a motion to close?
Motion.
A motion to close by Commissioner Ackerson, can I have a second? Can I have a second?
Second.
Second. By Commissioner Camarillo.
Mr. Mayor, before you move for a, a vote on the, I, I just have, do have one suggestion. Before you move for a vote on this ordinance, I do have one suggestion. Um, where it's, the definition of plastic shopping bag in the ordinance states a bag that is not made, that is made from a non-compostable plastic, compostable plastic, and that is not specifically designed and manufactured for multiple reuse. And then at the bottom, it bans stores from providing these bags, but that could be virtually anything. So, to solve that, I would simply ask that you add to that definition, uh, and that is specific, and that is specifically provided to a customer at the point of sale for the purpose of transporting goods. I think that would get across with what you're trying to do. Okay.
Well, that, that'll come up on the action when it's adopted, this is a public hearing, it's a public hearing.
Move to close.
So, we got a motion to close and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Do you did put the language in there about biodegradable bags, right? Okay. Now, uh, based on the attorney's, uh, recommendation, can anybody, uh, make the motion?
May I make the motion to approve the ordinance, um, as written with the addition of section eight, which is the accept, which is exceptions to the use of plastic bags for meat and poultry items and with the, uh, recommended suggestion, uh, as per legal count. By a city attorney.
Okay. So, you make note of that, Art?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Ackerson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This is a great day for our city, believe me, believe me. We'll be glad we did, uh, in a year from now or two years from now, you'll, you'll see the difference. Thank you very much. Uh, next, uh, item? Item eleven?
Item twelve.
I'm sorry, item twelve.
Public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thou, two thirty-five dash two thousand and nine dash zero forty-one to rezone from light retail F to medium retail G, five acres out of block one forty-six of El Harding subdivision located at thirty-six thirty-one Old Port Isabel Road.
Could we get the other one, please?
Item thirteen.
Twelve and thirteen together.
Item thirteen, public hearing in action.
Would you like to read thirteen also, please?
Public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and nine dash zero forty-one dash S to allow a light retail use in a general retail use five a, for five acres out of El Harding subdivision located at thirty-six thirty-one Old Port Isabel Road.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, uh, in these two cases, uh, the applicant would like to have a mini, uh, storage warehouse, uh, complex. The property is, uh, uh, the, the area sitting there in red, uh, the applicant in this case had a unanimous, unanimous approval from the planning and zoning commission. Our first ordinance, uh, is asking for, uh, reduction of the side yards and then there's a specific use, uh, and there, in your packet, there is the site plan for the, uh, storage units. Uh, that's been reviewed and approved by the planning and zoning commission. I ask for approval on both of these applications.
Okay. This is a public hearing, uh, item twelve and thirteen, anybody for or against? We have a gentleman here, please state your name.
I'm back. My name is Craig Timmer. I just wanted to comment on, on both twelve and thirteen, but primarily on thirteen. I live, uh, within a stone's throw of that area and I have no problems with that, with that going in there. The only thing I would really like to encourage y'all to do is to please fix Old Port Isabel Road before that's allowed because that road is horrible. It is in terrible shape, particularly between this site and eight oh two, but even from eight oh two further south. But it is in terrible, terrible shape. And I realize that's not gonna, not gonna, uh, have a whole lot of traffic behind it, but nevertheless, I, I would, I, I would like to see this as a jumping off point to help, uh, to help repair that road. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, is anybody else here for or against?
Move to close twelve and thirteen.
Wait a second, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Close twelve and thirteen, second.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Longord, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This is an action item for twelve thirteen, can I have a motion? Can I have a motion?
Move to approve both items.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Trani, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any further discussion on twelve and thirteen? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. Item fourteen.
Item fourteen, public hearing in action on, on the Housing and Urban Development Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, as a requirement under funding agreement with HUD, uh, we have to have this public hearing basically to report on, uh, how much money we spent, uh, in, in the funding, uh, that we received from HUD. As you can see in the spreadsheet on top, we, we do have, uh, city budget money of, uh, of three million, uh, four hundred and eighty-one thousand, that's including prior years, the home program, which is a housing program of one point nine million, uh, the addy, which is a down payment assistance grant, we only had five thousand and that was basically one or two homes. Uh, emergency shelter grant of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand and, uh, state money of, uh, of two hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty-two, twenty-three thousand. Uh, the spreadsheet on, on the bottom, uh, basically breaks it down by the specific uses. Uh, city manager earlier asked me, well, how much money did we spend for streets? Well, we, uh, including this last year and the prior year, a little bit of money left over from the prior year, we spent one point seven. And we usually spend that money in public facilities and improvements, it's basically streets and drainage, so that's how much money we spend in there. Public services, we always spend our maximum, it's four hundred and sixty-three thousand. Uh, housing, uh, which is our down payment assistance, uh, is, uh, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Uh, we did buy that building on Taylor Street and that was a hundred and five thousand and then other miscellaneous projects, a hundred and forty-two thousand. So, this is a public hearing to, if anybody has any questions for the public or the commission, we're here to address.
Thank you, Ben. This is a public hearing. Um, anybody want to speak for or against? If not, can I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Commissioner Atkinson.
Actually, I've got a question.
Second by Commissioner Trani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Action item?
Actually, can I ask Mr. Medina a question?
Commissioner Trani makes a, a motion to pass? Can I have a second?
Actually, he can get the discussion.
I don't want to pass it. I want to ask him a question. Is that okay?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
It is okay. Sorry to hear you.
Thank you. Mr. Medina, what about the, uh, I think you've made a comment about the, uh, the HUD project near the freeway. What's, what's going on with that? We're talking about the fund? The, the HUD project near the freeway?
Yeah.
The housing project?
Oh, okay. Well, that, then, uh, that project, Commissioner, um, the, the housing authority is, is getting stimulus money directly as a, as a, as authority. Uh, they, um, need to refurbish some of their units, um, that were damaged by the hurricane or are no longer in use. Uh, the, the project Victoria Gardens on the intersection of Highway, uh, 48 and, uh, and Expressway 83, right there on, on the, on the left side, it needs to repair. But those units were built in the 40s. Uh, they no longer meet the housing code, the international building code. The bedrooms are too small. Uh, the, the expressway expansion, they don't meet the noise requirements. Uh, so HUD is saying, well, you really can't, uh, we can't give you money to refurbish those or build them new. They're, they're in a bad location. So, they're having to relocate, uh, that complex to another location that's more suitable for housing.
And are they going to provide funding for, for that relocation?
Yes. They, they've done that with, with Poncetta. They, they can do that. They do that every day. So, so they have money for relocation. They have money for demolition. Uh, but they need the other part, which is for building, uh, new.
Thank you.
New somewhere else.
I'd move to approve.
We have a motion approved by Commissioner Trani. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo. This is an action item. Any discussion?
Ben.
No, say something? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item 15?
Item 15, public comment period.
Um, we have one, two, three, four, uh, starting with, uh, Raoul Guerra Martinez. Susan Smith.
Raoul Guerra Martinez.
Yeah, then Susan Smith Lingo, Roberto Barrera, and Terry Flores, in that order.
Attorney, we, uh, my name is Raoul Martinez. I'd like to see what the city commissioners can do to put a...
Can you put the mic closer to you?
Sorry, Mr. [inaudible]. I'd like to see what the city commissioners can do, um, to put an end to unsuitable rent, rental properties being approved by the city building inspectors, permit, uh, department. I have an ongoing problem with a noncompliant landlord who has and continues to get leeway by lenient building inspectors, which enable these type of rental owners to operate and abuse renters' rights, along with overlooking and violating inspector, inspection guidelines. Also, they should probably, properly identify themselves with courtesy and concern and with visible, with their names visible on their shirts, badge, or name tag. If they cannot assist with the issues at hand as a possible violation, they should refer and provide the person reporting the issue with an appropriate name, phone number, or website to have the issue properly addressed. There has to be an emphasis on weeding out corruption in our city and protect all renters of unsuitable rental properties and noncompliant landlords by going after them and enforcing these inspection codes. Because of this issue, um, I'm temporarily staying at Ozenon, and, um, they have a curfew at nine o'clock. So, on top of having an issue, having a home and not being able to stay there, I was forced out of my home, and now I'm not going to have, um, because of the meeting. I didn't know the meeting was going to be this long. But I really hope that I can get some, some attention drawn to this issue, um, because there's, uh, there's a problem with the building ins, inspector department.
Mr. Martinez, I'm sorry, I cannot respond neither to anybody.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying it. I'm saying thank you.
Allow me, allow me, please. I'm sure if you'll sit down with city manager, he'll direct you and hopefully provide you the response that you need. If you'll come down tomorrow and meet with him, uh, ask the secretary for an appointment, he'll listen to your, your concerns, okay? Please do that. Try that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms., uh, Lingo?
For the record, my name is Susan Smith Lingo, and I do have, um, reusable bags at home. I was just being the devil's advocate. Sorry, guys. I didn't think that plastic bags could make such a storm, and I would like to see them cleaned up as I live off of Alton Glor. Thank you very much. Okay. Um, I've heard a lot spoken about tonight, um, words such as helping those who cannot help themselves. I've heard the term affordable housing. I've heard the term of helping the less fortunate, and government doing things that provide justice for those who cannot provide for themselves. So, I'm going to tell you who I'm representing. I'm representing my father and my mother, Bob and Buddy Sue Smith. My father is a disabled veteran. He will be 80 on, on April the 27th of next year. Um, my parents live, I'll give you the exact location. They live at 35120 Myers Road, Brownsville, Texas. My father bought the land out there 30 years ago, actually almost 32 years ago. And, um, my father built two houses on Myers Road. He was the first person on that side of the road to construct houses. He sold one, and he now lives in another one. And a year and a half ago, my father went to put his house up for sale. And come to find out, um, he couldn't get a clear title. And the reason stated was he was encroaching upon, um, a corporation who had bought that land behind them, that he was encroaching upon their land. And the name of this corporation is, uh, Community Development Corporation of Brownsville. And I believe the administrators are Nick Bennett and, uh, Mr. Joel Garza, who my parents have dealt with over and over and over and over and over again. And my father went to see the surveyor, uh, Mr. Oscar Chavez, who owns, I believe it is called, and I have a lot of notes, so you will bear with me, with you, please. It is C A D C A M. Mr. Chavez was the responsible party. Oh, and by the way, my father's had two lawyers. Lawyer one, Paul Hemphill. Lawyer two, Gene McCullough. But then lawyer three, Daniel Renfro, who is, uh, representing apparently the Community Development Corporation of Brownsville, who I assume is supposed to be there to help the people. Our lawyer decided that he couldn't do it. My parents are not wealthy. I am not wealthy. Nor do I have the responsibility of trying to make people to do the right thing. But that's why you are commissioners. Now, I'm going to read a letter that my father wrote. It says, "To whom it may concern. On December the 9th, I visited Brownsville City Planner, Mr. Nue Puga, in his office. Mr. Puga informed me that the issue of securing a clear title to my home property was all about money. He told me that the CDCB people would not accept the blame for the problem, but say that CodCam Corp. are at fault for not informing them and me of a survey problem they discovered years ago. He said the replating fleet, fees and legal costs to solve the problem would be my responsibility. He said my two options are, one, pay the cost, or two, tear off the rear portion of my house. I remind you, my father's going on 80. On Friday the 11th of December, I went to Ca, Cadcom, and I talked to Mr. Oscar Chavez. I asked Mr. Chavez for a copy of the survey he had shown me over a year ago. This survey, made by his company, showed no encroachment of my building into the CDC property behind me. Mr. Chavez told me that he did not finish the survey, even though he did not know the actual status of the boundary line. He told me he did not do a complete survey because the owners would not pay him any more money. I questioned him as to how his company could certify a survey for developing a subdivision without completing a survey of all its boundaries. And I asked myself, how can the city of Brownsville give a permission to a, let me get the name right. Where are you? Community Development Corporation of Brownsville. That's a pretty name. How did they get permission to build and to make a subdivision behind my folks' home without clearing the title properly? And why is it my folks are the only ones held accountable in this situation? My father has offered, he put money in Mr. Hemphill's man, hand. He said, "Here, pay them. I will pay up to X amount of dollars." At this point, my father is up to about $5,000 out-of-pocket expense. And I don't know where to go. What, do I need to go to the state next? Because I will. But I think somebody in this room can help. And I'm asking on behalf of my father and my mother, who for 40 years in this community have paid property taxes on time, every time, who for 40 years have contributed to this community, 40 years. You take your mom and your dad, and you cut off the back of their house to comply with some business. Please do that for me, would you? Have your 80-year-old father tell you, "Well, right after Christmas, sweetie, I'm going to have them come and cut," because I'm so tired of fighting this. Can I tell you that my father's in bad physical health? Can I tell you my parents have been under undue stress for a year and six months? They lost the sale of their home? Hello? They lost the sale of their home. My parents were moving in town, close to me. I had worked tirelessly to get them to finally sell. I got them to sell. We put a down payment on another house. They would not work it out. And they went to my father's house, and they made promise after promise after promise after promise after promise. Pura, pura, pura blah! As you say in Spanish. Puro labio, pura nada! Give me action. He has been willing. He has asked. My father is an honest man. He is a good man. He is a law-abiding man. He is a veteran of this country. And I appeal to the Brownsville City Commission to do something. Or is he, as he stated, at the mercy of irresponsible businessmen and their practices? Or should I say, lack of correct and honest business practices?
Okay, Ms. Lingo, um, I sympathize with you, and I...
I don't need your sympathy, sir. I honestly, and I don't mean to be rude. No, sir, listen, I don't want your sympathy.
You're being rude.
I don't need sympathy. My folks don't need sympathy. They need action.
Unfortunate, because what I was going to say is that I would sit down with Ben Medina tomorrow.
I want to help you.
Okay?
All right.
What I was going to tell you, before you got to be rude, that I would sit down with Ben Medina tomorrow and, and go over this and see what we can do. That's what I was going to tell you.
Mayor, she's not being rude. She's passionate, like you're passionate about your title.
I'm not recognizing you. I'm just trying to let her know that...
Back off.
I have copies if anybody is interested in everything.
Ms. Lingo, if you want, come tomorrow to my office, and I'll sit down with Ben Medina and you, if you're listening. If you're not listening, well...
You already said she was rude, so leave her alone.
Okay, next person, I guess. Roberto Barrera.
Before I go, I want to say thank you very much for giving me your attention. And all I ask is to do the right thing. Isn't that what we're elected to do? I teach my students, do the right thing. That's all I'm asking my commission to do. Do the right thing for an older man, and that's the only house my father has. My father receives no social security. None. He doesn't have an income. So, please, all I'm asking is for justice. That's it. I'm not asking for a handout. He never has, and he taught me never to ask for a handout. Thank you, my dad.
Thank you. Mr. Barrera?
Honorable mayor, honorable commissioners, and my fellow Americans. Today, I want to be very candid with you, like I have always been. Today, I'm not here to bury Caesar, but rather to praise him. I have never mouthed off to any of you. I don't, I'm well informed on my issues, and my issues have some foundation. I'm not destructive nor disruptive, and I don't want to put this city in a negative light, because I love this city, county, state, and my nation. Today, I want to praise, first, our city manager, Mr. Charlie Kavler, for the good work being done on our city streets. Whether the work was done by our city employees or was contracted out, our city streets are looking very good. All of our citizens appreciate this good street work that's being done by the, the city, and that includes you people, since you are the head of the, the whole clan. Remember McDavid Street? Or you just bump, bump, bump? It looks beautiful now. Los Seveno Street going to Pace High School near my home looks and writes very good. Thanks, Mr. Trani, for saying that we speakers are not schoolchildren, and we must be treated as adults who are really concerned about our city activities. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Commissioners. Merry Christmas to all of you, and may you all have a, a healthy... Since I was a little depressed for a while, but I'm ready to go again. A healthy 1910, 200, 210.
2010.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrera.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Uh, Mr. Terry Flores, please.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ben. Best wishes to you.
Thank you, David.
Chris, what's that?
Thanks, sir.
For the record, it is 1595, and it is under our allowed $250.
Okay, Ms., uh, give, give your attention to Ms. Flores, please.
Hi, um, Terry Flores. Um, I just have a comment with regards to the new, um, I guess, board that's being created, the Imagine Brownsville Board. My question is, where's the private sector? Where's the business community involved in getting Imagine Brownsville off to a start? All I see is a bunch of public entities. For example, U of A, uh, the University of Texas in Brownsville. That's the same one that just, uh, built the new library smaller than the existing one? That's the same one that wants to, uh, put that mural? Hire a Mexican artist instead of an American artist? That's the same entity that's going to help flourish Brownsville? P, uh, the port of Brownsville? The only, uh, uh, port that we have to support for its existence? No revenue comes in? That's supposed to improve Brownsville? The Brownsville Community Improvement Board? Come on! Uh, as far as I'm concerned, most of these boards have failed. Even the city of Brownsville. You're working in the red. That's a failure. And the result is, we look third world compared to MacGalen. That's the proof. MacGalen looks like America. Here, we look like third world. Where's the business community to help Brownsville move forward? Plus, uh, the kind of Brownsville I want to see? I don't want to see graffiti, and I see it growing every single day. There's a war raging just across a few hundred feet from us. A drug war. What are you all doing to protect the city? With, if, this is the, this is the battleground. This is a battleground now. There's not going to be no Imagine Brownsville if that war is, spills over here, which is already started. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Uh, that's the end of public comments, I believe. Uh, this goes to item 16.
Item 16, consideration in action on an interlocal agreement with Almeda Water Supply Corporation to collect garbage fees, city maintenance fees, and federal unfunded environmental, environmental compliance fees for customers it serves that are not served by the Brownsville Public Utilities Board.
Honorable mayor and members of the city commission, this event, we request that this item be tabled for the next meeting, which will be January the 5th, 2010.
Will it be tabled? Certainly, uh, recommendation of the city finance director, can I have a motion to table?
Some of...
Motion to table Commissioner Camarillo. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gallin. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 17, please.
Item 17, consideration in action on resolution number 2009-070 to authorize the submittal of a funding application to the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation for Quality of Life Projects for fiscal year 2010.
Mayor, commissioners, uh, the Parks and Recreation Department submitting for two projects for this next fiscal year. Uh, we're going to add to the, uh, list of some of the finest parks facilities in the state of Texas, and our request is for two projects. One is at Oliva Park, and it's a renovation project to take care of some dilapidated, it's kind of outdated repairs. Um, North Brownsville Kickball Complex Restrooms will be a lot of people that are pretty happy of you, um, especially come time with the leagues, and people will be thinking about you every day out there.
Thank you.
Of course, these are BCIC-funded projects and reimbursed by BCIC. Uh, we've been doing this for several years now. The majority, if not many, of the projects and parks are due to BCIC funding. And again, we have some of the top facilities in this state, including anything better than the RGVs shows, um, for instance, a sports park, other places, and, uh, we're For instance, a sports park, other places, and, uh, we're very proud. All of our employees are to maintain them and kinda move them towards the future, so these two projects are major. I've been here eight years and I think that those are probably the, especially Oliva Park.
Are you, you stack and have a motion?
Some of-
Thank you.
Trani, can I have a second?
Second.
Second, but Commissioner Gallin, any discussion?
I just wanna say one thing, Chris, I, I know when you first got into your new position, we were working on Oliva Park, I wanna, I can't stress it enough, my gratitude and thanks to you and your staff for putting this project on. You're right, Oliva Park is in major, major need of some renovations and some tear downs and the residents, and everyone who goes to Oliva is gonna be so much grateful. So thank you to you and the staff for everything that you guys are doing.
Appreciate that, I do wanna add that Public Works and, uh, Parks and Rec are working hand in hand on this one. It's gonna save a lot of money.
And I wanna thank you for your helping out with Garfield when I went to you about that.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, item eighteen.
Item eighteen, consideration and action on resolution number two thousand and nine dash zero seventy-one to amend the general fund and airport fund to provide funding for Imagine Brownsville and airport operations.
Honorable mayor, members of the city commission, we're asking for a budget amendment to the general fund and to the airport fund. General fund would, would, uh, increase, or actually allocate funds for the Imagine Brownsville for twenty-five thousand dollars. And we're also wanting to transfer from the general fund to the airport fund for a hundred thousand dollars. If you recall, on the last meeting, we had the presentation of financial, of the financials for September thirtieth. And there was an item that we had budgeted in the general fund, in the airport fund, of a sale of land that did not materialize at the airport. And we, at that time, we told you that we would be coming for a budget amendment because we don't want to have the, the airport fund in a, in the red. We want the airport fund to be in the black. So this budget amendment increases the transfer from the general fund to the airport fund to keep that fund in, in the black.
Okay, um, can I have a motion?
Some of-
The motion by Commissioner Camarillo, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, but Commissioner Hackinson. I strongly object to this funding because Imagine Brownsville is a pro-fa, pro-profit organization. And based on that, uh, I cannot in good conscience vote for that. Okay, uh, a, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Nay. Item nineteen.
Item nineteen, consideration and action regarding housing guidelines for the implementation of Holly Dolly, Hurricane Dolly assistance grants.
Honorable mayor, city commissioners, uh, this, in your package, you have the guidelines proposed by the state. And, and this guidelines really lay out the framework for the families that will be assisting. Uh, they will all be eighty percent median and below. Uh, it outlines the, uh, the, the application process, the, the marketing program that we'll do. And, and how to, uh, how the applications will fi, will go through our department for actual assistance. Uh, the assistance, we, uh, plan to, uh, assist eighty-five families, of which, uh, twenty families would get roof and oil repairs, another twenty-five for weather station and the reconstruction, as I mentioned earlier. We have a model of the Katrina Cottage, twenty families will be assisted with those, and, uh, which one's a two-bedroom and another one's a three-bedroom, uh, Katrina Cottage, both of them, twenty families each. And, uh, that's basically what we wanna do. This contract's from October two thousand and nine to September thirtieth, two thousand and eleven. Uh, in your package, you do have the, the, uh, the guidelines, uh, but this is in a nutshell, I kinda briefed them, so I ask for your approval.
Thank you, Ben, uh, can I have a motion?
Some of-
The motion by Commissioner Trani, can I have a second?
Second.
Second, but Commissioner Longordia, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'd rise to a point of information in regard to item number nineteen.
Yes, sir.
You made a statement as to Imagine Brownsville being a for-profit entity, and that, my information was that, that's not correct. It, it was a project of the city of Brownsville, and that that organization is still in the process of being formed, is that not correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So you're saying, you're saying that the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, nobody made money on that thing?
The, the Imagine, that was a private contractor, but the Imagine Brownsville project itself-
That is Imagine Brownsville. The private contractor, they charged us eight hundred and fifty thousand. Where's the accounting that says it's not pro, 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 for, uh, profit? Where's the accounting, or where's the, uh, uh, status five oh one C? Where, where's, where's the corporation that says it's not for profit?
My understanding is we're mixing two different issues, Mr. Mayor. We're mi, we're mixing the, the retention of a private contractor to prepare that master plan, which the city obtained an award-winning, uh,
Without your consent.
And, and the, and the formation of the committee itself and the, and the nonprofit corporation, which is in the process of being formed. Those are two different issues, and I just wanted that point of information to clarify this point.
While I do respect your order, but the thing is, uh, that, that they haven't brought anything here to show it's not for profit. They haven't brought anything here to show how the money's gonna be accounted for, in fact, they didn't even know when they came here. They didn't even know if the director's gonna be full-time, part-time, if the, uh, grant writers gonna be part-time, full-time. They didn't know anything. And as far as I'm concerned, they, they have filed nothing to show it's a non, uh, a nonprofit organization.
So why didn't you say it to Fred when he was here?
I did.
Didn't tell, everything you just said right now, you didn't say to Fred when he was here?
I asked if it was for profit or not, he didn't know.
No, he didn't.
And then he said, it, it was not listed as non, uh, as a nonprofit organization, he did say that.
The reason, the reason I, I asked the question, Mayor, is, is because actually I was at a meeting today where we were, a number of attorneys were in the process of drawing up bylaws of a nonprofit corporation, uh, to be-
You're in the process, but it's still, at the moment that I am voting here, nothing has been brought forth to show it's a not-for-profit. It, it is not a-
How do you know it's for profit?
And the thing is, the, the eight hundred and fifty thousand did go for profit, and it's part of the same thing. You might wanna play a shell game, but it's not a shell game, in my eyes. People make money off this thing, it's a duplicity of, of the city's efforts and all the other planning. And this is a for, for profit as far as I'm concerned. Certain people are making money off this project.
Mayor, if you-
Item twenty.
Same way somebody's making profit off the recycling program you bought to us a couple of years ago. It's the same thing.
It is.
It's a contract with the city that somebody that's a friend of yours owns and makes a profit.
That is for-profit organizations, there's a difference. They're not trying to mislead anybody.
You're just trying to mislead this, you're, you're, you're the one that's misleading, I'm sorry.
At no time did the recycling program say it was a not-for-profit.
Mayor, when you paid for Vision two thousand, what'd you do with that money? What'd you do with that money? Vision two thousand was yours, where'd that money go?
City attorney.
Where'd that money go, Mayor?
You wanna put it in the agenda, put it on the agenda.
Well, stop talking about it.
Well, then stop bringing stuff that's not on the agenda up, we gotta go, it's time.
Brought something back that shouldn't have been brought back.
Can we move on, please?
Now, can we move forward to item twenty?
Yeah, that's right.
Item twenty.
Item twenty, consideration and action to authorize the acceptance of the expenditure of Texas Department of Transportation's selective traffic enforcement program, impaired driving mobilization grant awarded to the Brownsville Police Department in the amount of nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety cents for fiscal year twenty ten.
Mayors, members of city commission, good evening, pretty much the, uh, agenda speaks for itself. Of this, of this amount, the, uh, the funding from Texas is fourteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents, and the four thousand, nine hundred, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents is our local share, and that's budgeted from our, uh, from our fiscal year two thousand and ten budget.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion approved, Commissioner Trani, second by Commissioner Camarillo, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, Chief Anderson, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Commissioner.
Item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one, consideration and action to authorize staff to submit a grant proposal to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality for three nineteen non-point source pollution prevention funding as part of a regional application to include construction of low-impact development, park amenities at Phillips Blanco Wildlife Refuge on, on Old Military Highway.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, commissioners, uh, right now we're seeking approval for submitted grant to the Texas Park, Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, T C Q, for a, uh, three nineteen non-point source pollution, uh, prevention funding. Uh, total amount would be, uh, two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, this is an action item.
Move to approve?
We have a motion to approve, but Commissioner Camarillo, can I have a second?
Well, actually, I've, I've got some-
Can I have a second first, before we open up the discussion?
Second.
Second, but Commissioner Gallin. Commissioner Trani, you recognize?
Yes, it's, it's my understanding that there were some, uh, some possibilities of transferring some land, and that there were some possibilities about some costs associated with this grant. Could you go into a little, uh, more depth on that issue?
Joe, uh, I wanna get Mr. Sternohoso to elaborate on that, please.
The, uh, the, uh, honorable mayor and commissioners, Joey Nohoso with the Public Works Department. The, uh, intent here is to fulfill some obligations that we have to U S Fish and Wildlife for, uh, the Garden Park, uh, stormwater treatment facility, we, that we use, uh, as part of, as part of the refuge. Now, as part of that agreement, we were, uh, we agreed to put in some park amenities to include a, a parking lot, restroom, and, and a, and a walking trail. They have informed us that they would give us the opportunity to, instead of doing that, give them some land or, or some money that's monetarily equal to that investment. And that's where that issue has come up.
And it's my understanding that would cut off the city's obligation as far as maintenance and, and basically to, to care for this property. And we could move it out further, and that possibly might be an, an access lane for the west, uh, loop that would move it out even further than that. So it wouldn't even be an impact into the, uh-
Well, those issues can still be pursued regard, I mean, once we've done this, we've fulfilled our obligations to them. If we don't do these park amenities, that still left in a holding pattern.
My concern is the continued obligation of payment that we would have in this circumstance. And if we can cut off our obligation without having to pay more money and fix these other problems, aren't we in a better place?
Well, that's just it, that, those other resolutions, those other, um, options haven't been defined. We're not sure where that's gonna take us. Now, that, that entails giving them land that we don't really know what, where that land's gonna come from. That still gives us, uh, leaves us at an open-ended situation. Now, the maintenance regarding the, the park, the walking trail and the restroom, uh, yes, there's an issue there, but it'll, we, that'll be minimal. I mean, we, we wanna go ahead and, and li, and limit. What the park wants is, uh, very low-impact visitation to the refuge. I mean, they want to encourage people to go out there, learn about low-impact development, green engineering, those issues. And this, this gives us the, uh, opportunity to provide demonstration sites, as well as, uh, some other demonstration sites throughout the, throughout the valley for that kind of, uh, technology.
Well, I guess the question I have, it, are there any specific time deadlines for doing this? Or can we pursue some of these other options at this time so that we can have a better picture? Because basically what you're telling me is that you haven't been able to solidify what the transfer of land would be, or what the impact would be.
Well, that, that just came up recently.
And that, that's my point.
One of the comments from the U S Fish and Wildlife was that we've taken way too long already to fulfill our obligations. Now, we're fixing to go into the second phase of that program, and we've yet really to come through with any of our deliverables. Now, obviously, we're, we're here at the direction of the commission, but, uh, that's kind of the issues that we discuss with, with U S Fish and Wildlife.
But those other issues are floating out there, and there's a possibility to have other resolutions that, which could end the city's liability.
Uh, I mean, they're, like I said, they're, they're giving us, they're opting out, they're giving us the option, option to opt out of this and provide them with that other option, but as of yet, that's way, way down the road as far as any definition as to what land will be provided, or, or what monetary, uh, uh, what monetary, uh, uh, definition they'll, they'll, uh, they'll give to this, uh, to, to the, to this, um, uh, in kind, if you will. I mean, they could come back and say, you know what, the walking trails, the parking lot, the restroom, they're gonna, they're worth this much, two hundred thousand. So give us two hundred thousand and, and case closed. Or give us land equal to two hundred thousand. I mean, that all can be kind of redefined.
At this point, we don't know, ba, basically what you're telling me is, is we don't know.
No, we don't know.
We want, we want the approval of the grant, and then they wanna negotiate with us, we can negotiate, but we got the funding submitted.
Well, I guess my concern is the long-term liability, but I appreciate your position.
Mr. Nohoso?
Yes, sir.
Is there any adverse impact getting this free money?
No, sir.
Well, I think-
Well, go ahead.
There, there is an adverse impact, and that is the, the maintenance cost down the road.
True, uh, but once again, this is a low-impact development. Here, we're hoping to encourage and educate the public about these low-impact options that eventually will curtail our carbon footprint, if you will, a, as a community, and reduce stormwater runoff. That impacts the refuge. Right now, we're still dealing with some of that.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes.
Is there any good reason in your opinion to oppose this grant?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
Your question, question, Commissioner?
How, um, since there are unknowns that you're describing, how long will it take to make them clear?
Well, the, this grant is defined. Uh, I mean, this gives us a, a definite pathway that we can follow as far as, uh, fulfilling our obligations. Now, if we wanna tell the U S Fish and Wildlife, you know what, we're gonna go ahead and leave this open, let's come up, come back to you, and, uh, we'll see what we can do. I mean, that's where the indefinite issue comes in. Right now, we have a, a definite option where we can fulfill our obligations. That's not to say that we can't, uh, work with the U S Fish and Wildlife on other issues, uh, but this is a, this is a definite option that we have here.
No, I understand that, but what I'm asking is, in a, in order to make the decision and evaluate the risks and the benefits, you need more information, it sounds like, as far as what this may entail in the future. How long will it ta, take you to evaluate those risks and the benefits so that we don't just make a decision now because it's here, but rather, is it best for the future?
Well, there I would have to defer to Mr. Medina, uh, and see what options he has regarding-
Ben, is there any risk in taking this grant?
Well, uh, there's a little bit more to this grant, uh, Mayor. Uh, basically, this is a, is it a valley-wide partnership? Uh, there's other cities involved here that would benefit from this grant and those perspect, prospective cities. The city will be administering this grant for those cities. In the terms of Fish and Wildlife for our specific project, uh, yes, we've taken long to build those improvements because we're still under construction with the stormwater, with planting the grasses that will filter this, this system, it's, it's very elaborate, uh, green type of system. But when we, uh, when Fish and Wildlife approached us a couple of weeks ago, when are you gonna do the, you know, complete that first phase? Which first phase was, uh, uh, a parking lot, uh, the walking trails, and a bird blind. We were about to, to build that, and then Fish and Wildlife said, hey, wait a minute, uh, we have sable palms that needs help, uh, we need land. Uh, this refuge on Garden Park is too urbanized, it doesn't fit our system, it's, 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 it's not isolated. So, so Fish and Wildlife said, you know, we're giving you an opportunity to not build those improvements, but take that money and help us out with maybe sable palms as an example, or another project. And, and long-term of that, I'd say maybe the city would be interested in buying or trading the three hundred and forty acres in Garden Park for another site somewhere else. I mean, that would be costly because it is prime property, and, and if it's appraised, uh, you, you may be talking about, you know, a couple of million dollars because it, it's prime. So that's, that's a long-term effect. But in this immediate situation, two things, one, we need to submit the grant because other cities are depending on it, as well as the city of Brownsville. But once you've built those improvements, I mean, those improvements are gonna stay. Those improvements, you're gonna buy into maintaining them, uh, having the, the trail operating, uh, functioning bathroom, parking lot. But, uh, but, but, I mean, that's your decision, but, uh, Fish and Wildlife wanted-
Let me ask you a question, is there any risk? And in your opinion, is there any good reason to oppose this?
Well, I wouldn't call it risk, like it's detrimental, but I would say, uh, do you want a long-term investment at this refuge, which we agree to as, as part of the permit, that's why the Fish and Wildlife gave us permission to build on their land, which has never done before in the, in the country? Or do you wanna not build those improvements and maybe long-term, uh, negotiate something to buy their land? But you're gonna have to take that money, uh, and help them out somewhere else. Or you wanna say Fish and Wildlife, you know, we agree to this, which they're okay with that as well. We're gonna build, uh, the improvements, which we will do, and enhance them with this grant, this is an enhancement grant. So we're gonna enhance those improvements that we're gonna have to open up the refuge.
So it's another step in a way of addressing the quality of life needs to enhance what we got. That's what you're saying?
Yes.
And they're providing, they're providing the funding to do that with no, uh, downside as far as what you see right now.
Ask a question? Ben, if we put this back on the agenda for the second week in January, can you find out where we are?
Well, there's a deadline, there's a deadline with the grant.
There is a deadline? The eighteenth of December?
So you see, the, it's, the other cities are depending on the grant for the- What cities?
Uh, Far has, uh, has a, a green roof that they're trying to put in, Donna, a, a pervious parking lot, and, uh, and, uh, and, uh, Westlaco as well, trying to put in a, a, a green roof. It's just low-impact technology that we wanna use as demonstration sites to, to the community throughout the region.
But I think the question that he asked was, at the end of the day, next twenty years, we pay for the maintenance and all this. What is the cost over these twenty years that's gonna be incurred by the citizens of Brownsville?
Well, one of the comments by you-
Because that all grants, everybody thinks this grant is free money. But there's, a lot of these grants come with a, with a catch-
Well, one of the comments made- One of the comments made by U S Fish and Wildlife is, the city is not really doing anything as far as environmental education, as far as, as environmental, uh, uh, access, access to, to the public, the like, for our, for our parks. I mean, there's very limited access, I mean, where, where do these people have a-
You mean, there's mi, minimal access, what are you talking about?
Well, that's what they were saying. As far as, uh, nature trails, there's very, very few opportunities for the, for the, uh, people in the community to involve themselves in nature.
Joe, before you, you speak, if we- Joe, before you speak, if we take this money-
How much money is it?
If we decide further down the road that we don't want to do anything, there's really no maintenance to it. It's just, the improvements stay there, and that's it, right? So there's no risk?
As it is right now, we're having to maintain the pump station anyway. It'd be minimal to maintain this little walking trail.
There's no reason to turn this down.
You know, it's-
Well, I guess the question I have, can we apply for the grant and then come back and still negotiate on the land?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. That's why we need to apply. We got December eighteenth deadline before we start. I'm trying to understand what Ben is saying. So we need to talk to those people at length. But we need to apply for the grant now.
One other note is that one of the partners in this grant is also the Cameron County Drainage District, and they're applying for a four-hundred thousand dollar grant to improve their stormwater retention capabilities in North Brownsville.
Well, I saw how well everybody worked at the city of Brownsville today at the Lower Rio Grande Development Council. That was very interesting with the drainage district.
No kidding.
I mean, there's a lot of benefits, obviously. Maintenance, yes, that's always going to be an issue, but it'll be a low-impact, minimal-maintenance kind of situation.
Okay, can I have a motion? I make the motion to approve. Can I have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Commissioner Camarillo. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We got two nays.
Who's the other name?
Commissioner Atkinson, Commissioner Tureny. Say name. And Commissioner Longoria. The majority passes. Okay, next item, please.
Item twenty-two, consideration in action to award a contract for renovation of Sam's Pool located at Dean Porter Park.
Move the table.
Move the table, please.
Give us a second.
Okay, we have motion to table by Commissioner Longoria. Can we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Item twenty-three, consideration in action to award a contract for preservation architectural services for design guidelines for the historic downtown district, Los Ebonos, West Brownsville, and Buena Vista neighborhoods.
Evening, Mayor, City Commission. Staff recommendation is to award a contract for architectural services for design guidelines for the historic downtown district, Los Ebonos, West Brownsville, and Buena Vista by Kimby McCoy of Dallas, Texas. This contract will be based on fixed fee schedule contract for thirty-nine thousand, six hundred. All the expenditures or expenses are included within the fixed fee contract. This firm anticipates to begin these design guidelines in the month of January and will complete the design guidelines in approximately six months after the best and final offer.
Who's the company?
Kimby McCoy of Dallas, Texas, architectural firm. It's on the back of the analysis, the following page.
Did anybody from locally compete for these things?
There was, if you look on the third page-
Mr. Goodman's right behind you.
There were four firms, Alamo Architects, Mesa, Clayton, and Kimby McCoy. Now, these particular services are specialized, and I would like for Mr. Goodman to give you an explanation of what these design-
So the RFPs went locally and also statewide?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. You answer my question.
Kimby McCoy, by the way, is a preservation architect. They specialize in that.
Good enough for me.
Move to approve, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo. Can I have a second? Second by Commissioner Tureny. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Item twenty-four, consideration in action to award a contract for street paving and drainage improvements for West Elizabeth Street.
Staff recommendation is to award a contract for street paving and drainage improvement for West Elizabeth to G and T Paving Company of Brownsville, Texas, a low responsible bidder, for a total bid amount of seven-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and twenty-five cents. This project came under the engineer's estimate by two-hundred-and-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-five cents. The contractor is obligated to commence the work immediately after receiving the notice to proceed and will complete the work within a hundred and fifteen consecutive calendar days. Funding is in place from the office of the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs.
May I move to approve? Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Camarillo. Second by Commissioner Longoria. Any discussion?
Mayor, I just want to say this project is, we waited fifty, sixty years to see that street paved, get reconstructed. I can't wait to see the rebar and that cement come out of there. So I want to thank staff, city manager, BEM, Shalastan, Public Works. You guys have known, this has always been on the list, and I'm so thankful and glad that we finally have the funds to make this project happen. Not only people in West Brownsville will be excited about this, but every citizen in this community. So thank you all very much.
I think the residents are not going to believe it when they see it.
They sure won't, I know. Well, a big street party.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Item twenty-five, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of and technical support for software and hardware for Spillman ticket writers.
Staff recommendation is to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, installation, and training of five Spillman mobile e-citation and Spillman D L scanning software modules and licenses for ticket writer systems for the Brownsville Police Department to Spillman Technologies Incorporated out of Salt Lake City, Utah, in the amount of twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars. This procurement is considered a sole source or captive replacement since we currently have the software from Spillman Technologies, and it also complies with section two fifty-two, zero twenty-two, the local government code.
I will call for a motion.
There's another recommendation also. It's split into two. The other recommendation is to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of five handheld Windows mobile units or computers and five thermal label printers for ticket writer systems for the Brownsville Police Department to John Wright Associates of Arlington, Texas, in the amount of twenty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety cents. And this procurement reflects DIR contracting pricing for a total of a combination or combined total amount of forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety cents. Funding for this procurement is available a hundred percent from the Core Technology Fund.
Is this what's going to be used for the motorcycle office?
For the motorcycles, yes.
Okay.
Move to approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any discussion?
Mayor, I guess, well, Mr. Long, I don't know if you can answer this, but I guess police officers will no longer have to buy the printed papers, the tickets that they come in anymore? That's going to be done away with? So that's a cost savings, I think, to the city?
Well, it's going to be a device, that it's a thermal printer, that automatically, when they give the citation, they will get the ticket, and they will give it to the private.
But it'll no longer be that paper form where they take off the-
No, no, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Item twenty-six, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of eighteen mobile data computers for police patrol vehicles for the Brownsville Police Department.
Staff recommendation is to award a contract for purchase, delivery, and installation of eighteen mobile data computers for police patrol vehicles for the Brownsville Police Department to Motorola Incorporated in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and twenty cents. This is an H E A C procurement. Funding is in place out of the JAG grant account for a hundred thousand dollars, and the remaining balance of eight thousand, seven ninety point twenty will be covered by the Federal Parfiture Fund.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion approved by Commissioner Longoria. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tureny. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Motion.
I'd like to say something real quick.
Motion to adjourn, can I have a second?
I just want to wish-
Can I have a second to adjourn? Can I have a second to adjourn?
I think Mr. Atkinson would like to say something.
Do you have a second to adjourn?
No.
I can't let him speak. I'll open up for discussion, but I need a second.
Second.
We have a second. That's the protocol, ladies and gentlemen.
I thought it was a second to adjourn.
Now, any discussion?
Yes, I just would like to wish everybody in Brownsville Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year from my family of yours. And I'm sure the commissioners will like to say something too, but I just, there's a lot of great things coming in the next year. And though we're going through some tough times, I think if we stick together, we'll get through them. And I'd like to thank city staff for everything they've done this year. I know it's been hard, and we're going to work on those raises for the city staff, the non-silver service employees. I think it's justified that they do get something this year. And from my family of yours, we wish you Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And by the way, congratulations to Mr. Tom Chavis as the new athletic director. I was just told by Commissioner Somoto that he just became the new athletic director. Hopefully, that program can keep going the way it's been going, successful.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Those who oppose can stay.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.